Here.
Here.
Here. Everyone's had time to read the previous minutes. If there are no corrections or additions, we will consider the minutes to be approved as presented. We'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda, please.
I'd like a motion with a man.
Second that. Second to stand, all in favor.
Aye.
Okay. Well, tonight we will appoint Noel Die to replace Alderman Harris on the council. And we're glad to have you here. And you'll have all the rights and privileges and disadvantages of being an alderman until you're fully elected.
Yeah.
You got it.
I am. If everyone's in favor of appointing Noel Die.
We need a motion to appoint Noel Die. And I'll second that, second all in favor.
Aye.
You're in. It's amazing how easy it is to be.
It's the thing today.
I, Noel Die, do solemn swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed for this office by law, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of this state, the provisions of all the laws of this state affecting the city, and the co-ordinance of the city. And I will faithfully deem myself, while in office of West Ward Alderman of the City of Ava, which I was appointed on the 28th day of November, February 2017. Is that it?
That's it for you. And then I'm under commission, whereas Noel Die has been duly appointed to the office of West Ward Alderman of the City of Ava and State of Missouri, and has filed his oath of office. Now therefore, I, Suzanne Welsh, City Clerk of the City of Ava, due by the authority vested in me, a City Clerk, commissioned Noel Die as West Ward Alderman, given under my hand the seal of the City of Ava, Missouri, here to affix this 28th day of February in 2017.
Signature.
Please.
Okay, now, in regard to the issue concerning Sherry Wallace.
We have to do this.
Yeah, I thought about doing it close, but we didn't. Everybody needs to know.
You can't.
Stand up, please. We aggravated you on purpose. But each year, Jeff Ellis gives an award whenever they've audited and your lifeguards have performed the way that you've trained them to perform, and they're on duty and paying attention. And so you received a 2016 Gold International Aquatic Safety Award. And so we thought we'd present it to you. Yes, I've aggravated you about it. You didn't know what we were gonna do. Yes, I knew you'd worry about it. But we're proud of the job you do. You do a good job at the park, and I'm awfully glad you're there.
Thank you.
Come on. And I should apologize.
Can I get one more?
Here. We're gonna do this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you all right?
I'm okay.
I couldn't help it. You can stay.
I can go?
Or you can go. Sherry?
She's coming around now.
There's something else in there?
Yeah. What was that? 2016? Jeff Ellis.
Jeff Ellis Aquatic.
Okay. We didn't put it on the agenda, so it's not. They were, it was a 2016 Jeff Ellis Aquatic.
Safety award.
Safety award. Thank you.
Yeah, they're audited. Somebody Jeff Ellis goes down there and they watch the lifeguards to see that they're paying attention and there's certain things they're not supposed to do. And she, she watches them pretty closely. They had to discipline, maybe let one go there in December. Because twice they violated.
The safety rule.
Yeah. But anyway, she does a good job. Like, just worries herself to death that everything.
Somebody doesn't tell her what's going on.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't have anything tonight.
Suzanne?
Yeah, do you, do you wanna talk to him about the session material before I read it?
Yeah, I should, to be sure that's what we wanna do. We, she made a couple of calls. You know, we were talking about that last piece of ground, and this piece of ground didn't lay very well. And the east side of it, about a third of it's not too bad, and the rest of it doesn't lay very well. So we thought about making it for cremains, and what the suggestion is gonna be is that we make that whole section cremains.
It's block eleven.
Huh? Block eleven? Uh huh. And both funeral homes indicate that cremation is on the rise. And right now, it's about 35 to 40 percent of cremations. And so Suzanne called West Plains. There, it will necessitate that we have it resurated. And the plots for the cremains area will be two feet by five, rather than four feet by 10. And we got that from West Plains. And so it'll have to be completely resurated, and the price of that then would be 150 rather than 300 for a normal plot. That's, that's what we're proposing. And if we get permission from the council, we'll go ahead and get hold of Andy, or whoever we choose to do that, and have it surveyed. It's been surveyed once.
Two foot by five foot versus?
Four by 10.
Four by 10.
10.
Your normal graves are four feet by 10 with two feet designated for the stone or the marker. Okay. So you've got an eight-foot grave.
Eight foot.
I don't know what kind of markers they use, but it's got to fit.
You know, a lot of people are wanting to still do their normal headstone.
But you can't do that on a two-foot lot.
Well, if you had a husband and wife, and you still have that four-foot stone across bow, if they purchased it that way, Rick Graham said that there's a cremained monument up there, and it had a hole in the middle where the urn goes inside of it and is underground. There's just a little hole that it fits down into, but it's level with the monument, which is kind of interesting.
I don't, you know, it wouldn't make a difference to me what the marker was, we just got to fit the grave. You know, so.
If they knew they were purchasing two by five.
Then the mark, whatever. But we have to have something there that identifies the person who's been buried. We have to. And I'm afraid, maybe a patient or two, where we've had cremains buried up there, we didn't know it. And especially since we allow one cremains burial on top of a regular grave site. So if those people don't put an extra marker there, then we may not know who's buried it there. And the only thing to keep in mind is what our markers that we've got up there, the information we have here, are the only history we've got. You know, 200 years from now, somebody's looking for somebody. If we don't have it down, it's gone. So anyway, that's what we would like to do, and the proposal is to do that. And then if we okay that, we'll go ahead and arrange to have it surveyed and marked. And I might add today, Heath, I told Heath, I said, it's time you and I give up the responsibility for marking graves. He and I have done it for a couple of years. So I pawned it off on Rick Graham. And I think Rick and James Vance are gonna do it, but I was up there today. He got a better metal detector and was finding the brass pins.
Because did they pin, that was the question, do they pin each one, or are they just pin, you know, north, south?
No, they're, you've got, up here, you've got a 20-foot section, 20 feet across the top, 24 down here, and 20 here. And then you have four graves here and four here. You've got four pins in the corner, and then each grave pinned. So, but you just about have to have a metal detector, and you have to have a string if you find them. Because in order to get it done right, you have, you need to have at least three corners, so you can tell what you're doing. And without that, you're lost, especially right in the middle of a field. No other marker. And we found, we got up there today, and they found those pins, and lo and behold, Rick Graham's mother's buried in a walkway. It's not gonna matter, but, well. But anyway, we do, we are able to find the pins. So that's what we're looking for, is a motion to go ahead and do that with that last eight foot section.
So the only thing that is really changing is, like on your ordinance, the 1985 edition, I've stated graveside prices. We're gonna keep it at 150, but you'll see that in parentheses, it's for designating cremains only. So that it, it kind of explains why we're selling it for that price and that's.
Yeah. We need a motion to make that section cremains only.
Let me read that.
Read the ordinance.
Huh?
Read the ordinance, or, yes, okay. Ordinance number 1008, an ordinance to amend Chapter 28. Chapter 26 cemeteries of the Ava City Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 2684 and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 2684 Graveside Prices.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 10-1.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let me try reading this again. Ordinance number 1008, an ordinance to amend Chapter 26 cemeteries of the Ava City Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 2684 and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 2684 Graveside Prices.
Motion to approve.
Motion on second, please.
Yeah, the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're set about to get it surveyed and mapped out. And something we've talked about, you know, for a long time, we just haven't got it.
Okay, the second ordinance, we're cleaning up our planning and zoning by trying to get rid of all of the scattered B2 central businesses and just keep them located on the square, as central business on the square being B2 only.
We're going to be B3s.
So Max and Wanda, the United Country and Chamber of Commerce building was in a B2, and then also that Lester E Cox Medical building was in B2. So we're gonna try and change it to B3. So I've got two different ordinances separating both buildings for that.
You said the problem.
Yeah. So that's what.
We ran the notices, so.
Oh, nine and 10 are. And ordinance 1009 is an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B2 central business to B3 general business of property located at 810 Southwest 13th Avenue in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Max and Wanda Murphy, known as Area Land, United Country, and Chamber of Commerce, as described in legal description below, by request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading. Ordinance 1009, an ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B2 central business to B3 general business of property located at 810 Southwest 13th Avenue in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Max and Wanda Murphy, known as Area Land, United Country, and Ava Chamber of Commerce, as described in legal descriptions below, by request of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second reading.
Second.
Second.
No, second, all in favor?
Aye. I think she oughta have the legal description.
Okay, ordinance 1010. An ordinance to amend the Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B2 central business to B3 general business of property located at 806 Southwest 13th Avenue in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Max and Wanda Murphy, known as Lester E Cox Medical Center, as described in legal descriptions below, by request of Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1010.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading. Ordinance 1010, an ordinance to amend the Ava City, Ava zoning ordinance by changing the official zoning map and repealing that part of the ordinance in conflict herewith to change zoning from B2 central business to B3 general business of property located at 806 Southwest 13th Avenue in Douglas County, Missouri, and owned by Max and Wanda Murphy, known as Lester E Cox Medical Center, as described in legal descriptions below, by request of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then last but not least, this ordinance is allowing the MJMEUC to act in behalf of this city for waivers of public utility regulatory policies under the PURPA. And they're just stepping in and helping us to keep control of our power rates and stuff. They're acting in place of the city. So with this ordinance is also the instructions that we go by for that. So you've got two pages of the ordinance, and then the rest is all of the details on what they're doing for the city.
And there's something we're required to do each year, I think.
No, not necessarily each year, but we did, we didn't have it on file. And it exempts us, if the facility coming in, I think doing more than 20 megawatts, they come into our area, they could come in and require the city to purchase electricity. And this authorizes us to file an exemption with FERC saying, no, we buy our power from MoCap, and you negotiate with them. We list out the metal, you negotiate with them, and we'll buy, we buy our power again. So it's an exemption from being required to purchase from a facility that generates energy.
How about it?
Right. Ordinance 1011. Ordinance authorizing the filing of applications for the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, by the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, MJMEUC, on behalf of the City of Ava, a member city of MJMEUC, for waivers under the Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act of 1978, PURPA, for facilities greater than 20 megawatts and exempting cities from purchase requirements regarding qualifying facilities and adapting rules for compliance with FERC's PERC regulations.
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Whatever that is. Thanks for giving, all in favor?
Aye.
I really don't wanna read that again. All right, second reading, here we go. 1011. Ordinance authorizing filing of applications with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, by the Missouri Joint Municipal Electric Utility Commission, MJMEUC, on behalf of the City of Ava, a member, a member city of MJMEUC, for waivers under the Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act of 1978, PURPA, for facilities greater than 20 megawatts and exempting cities from purchase requirements regarding qualifying facilities and adopting rules for compliance with FERC's PERC regulations.
Motion to approve.
Make the motion on ordinance 1011, second reading. I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hurrah. Unless he just won't breathe again. A week from Thursday, we'll be bid opening on the, before we do that, we have some visitors, which you'd like to say and tell us who you are while you're here.
Good. Your name and town, where are you? Communication.
Hi, I'm Kiona Takarante. I'm here for Boy Scouts, and I'm doing a merit badge called Communication. So I just had to write down.
What troop?
Troop 68.
68. Okay, tell us your name again louder.
Kiona Takarante.
Okay.
Troop 68, doing Communication.
So this is part of your merit badge?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're glad to have you.
Nice to see you guys, too.
Thank you. Bid opening Thursday, and Andy or somebody, or not Andy, but.
Bid opening Jefferson City, and that's.
Is David going?
I don't know, he asked if we were going, and I don't know.
I would assume that what we need to do is make a note, and we'll call Chris Flagel, who's the engineer with the company that's doing the design for that, and have Chris let us know.
Yeah, I think they're bid opening for three cities at the same time that day. So they're just meeting at Lochner's office in Jefferson City.
I'll call Chris if you remind me, I'll call him in the morning, so that we, we know. Sidewalk project, they're on Third Avenue, and they're down, they didn't pour concrete all the way down today, I don't think.
They might have. When he was here, they were expecting another 20-yard track. Oh, no, that's for driveway, never mind.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the crosswalk was gonna be where the road is, and that's not correct. It's on down just a little bit, and it hits the walking path. Okay. The walking path, you've got about four or five feet of the walking path, and then it hits it. So it'll come down, and you're gonna cross into different places. They're putting a whistle down, so there's a ditch. Putting a whistle in there, and then they'll, they'll grade it so that you can walk across that.
Okay, I see what you're doing.
And I don't know, 18-inch, pretty good size, pass it down through there. Anyway, that's, that's what they were doing. With all the sidewalk work, I talked to Carl Slate, Martin was on the beginning, I talked to Carl Slate about the possibility of us pouring around sidewalks. And evidently, we used to have forms, sometime or another, and I'm gonna guess we got tired of doing it, or had to do it, or didn't have the manpower. But anyway, we, we don't have the forms anymore.
We had a lot of forms, and we loaned them out, and I don't think they ever come back. Over a period of time, they were just lost.
Well, if prevailing wage this year can bite the dust, and we then can take a hard look at whether or not we wanna do that. I'm not sure yet whether we want to, forms are expensive. But this last sidewalk grant, had we been awarded the grant, what it cost us $50,000. $50,000 worth of concrete will go quite a ways. And I'm not talking about pouring lots of sidewalks, I'm talking about in, in one fall, maybe not more than one block, or, or like from Harrow Brothers up to the utility, you know. But that sidewalk's bad, or the sheriff's office is bad, and one here's bad. And we, it wouldn't take too long to replace, you know, two, three, four years, and we'd be in pretty good shape. So that's a decision to make. We'll wait to see if prevailing wage goes away, which I hope, it's being considered, it's in committee. But, and then we'll need to talk to the man to see if we've got guys who can do the concrete work. Curbing gutter's a little different, but, you know, some of the sidewalk work, it's not just plain sidewalk. You look there in front of City Utilities, you're gonna have, you have a high curb and a rail on the sidewalk, and of course, it starts with that, when you get it upwards even with the level with the door entry, if it's anywhere close to ADA compliant. Now, we talk about ADA compliant, there are lots of places on this MODA sidewalk that you wonder if it's ADA compliant. And maybe they have options that you and I don't have, but, you know, you've got a four-foot sidewalk all the way down through there, then it goes to five, you've got some places where it's six.
And somewhere it goes back to four and makes sure.
It goes to four, and then you have a lip on some of it, which we hope we're gonna get them to saw that off. It's unusual. But anyway, that's just a thought, I'll just do that out for what's worth it. It's not anything we're gonna do tomorrow, but I mentioned it at state meeting today. I didn't see anybody jump up and say hurrah, frankly. But we probably will be looking at designated time to pour sidewalks, like the first of October to the first of December or so, when the brush crews through with their work, or the maintenance guys are through mowing, and the brush crews ain't quite started, so. Let's see. Travis Morrison is here on the Sanders property, is our new concrete supplier. And a nice guy, I hope y'all get to meet him. He's from West Plains, he has several towns where he has concrete plants. And Jerry Pitts has been down there, and we talked about cleaning up that ditch a long time, and getting all those willows out of there, and trying to get the spring into the creek. And there's all kinds of issues, the pond is still there. So, and they've done a lot of work, but I had never, I don't think I'd ever seen that ground.
Did it is Jerry doing the work, or?
Jerry's doing that work, and with the city, that's ours. And when it gets done, we'll line the creek with rock. That's what the street department wants to do there, so that it's, we won't have to go back in there. And you can see, they've also cleaned out this side of the road, and a little bit around the corner, there's a pile of brush there. Now, what I think they will do is, we'll get the fire truck there, the cheese there, and we'll probably burn, burn that brush, it's too much.
Also, they line with rock, David, the spillway?
Uh huh, the edge of the creek.
Okay.
And right now, the pond is draining very slowly into the creek. And I'm not sure where that spring is, but it goes into the pond, I assume. And the thought was to take the spring and route it into the creek. And maybe Travis doesn't want the pond. Huh? He doesn't want the pond? I don't, I, I think the plan is due anyway.
That was my understanding, eventually, he's gonna eliminate the pond.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was mine.
But he's still got lots of water, right?
But drink part of it out.
Yeah. Had the spillway there. Anyway, that's kind of where we are with the concrete business. One of the things that happens to small towns is we lose our services. We lose people who do plumbing and electrical work and we lose concrete plants and we lose all of that. So I, we're lucky in this little town, we've got a concrete supplier. And I think he's gonna be a very reputable guy, that corner's gonna look different. We also gotta thank you note from Al Harris in regard to all the things that everybody did in regard to Leon's funeral, big funeral. So I meant to ask Sherri, I've not heard anything from the guys about the disc golf. Did she say anything to you about? You know, we, we had an issue with event insurance and we haven't heard, so. Water tower, I don't know if we talked about, I think we talked about it last time, but what Jeff Koper did on the old one, you don't have too many people on it, but he routed all of those people onto another line and it's shut down until we get some places in the ceiling and the roof repaired. And that's forty thousand dollars or something, which we will do half of in March or April and the other half in the next, period Hogan's gonna do it. In the meantime, he had to issue letters to all these people, saying, we switched your water supply to another line, you have nothing wrong with your water, your water's fine. And we've done that. DNR, I don't know why they required that, but they, they did. So that's where we are with that, with the water tower. I noticed the one up on cemetery is looking kinda grubby. We also gotta thank you note from, who did the root?
Delta.
Huh?
Delta.
And we should've gotten one from Delta. As we did. Suzanne, I left anything else?
No.
I don't have anything else.
Court document.
Oh. Motion to approve on the court document.
I make a motion to approve the court document.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Second, it's my stand, all in favor?
Aye.
Several names are the same on the court document. I have motion going to close.
I make a motion going to close.
I'll second that motion. All in favor?